Meeting of the Salina Planning Commission to order. First order of business is the approval of the summary minutes from the December 6th meeting. Are there any questions or comments, or a motion to approve?
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we approve the minutes as presented.
Second.
There's a motion and a second.
All those in favor, say aye please.
Aye.
Any opposed? First of the public hearing items today is application number CU 11-9, request a conditional use permit. Staff have a report for us.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This report indicates to you that the proposal is to establish a drinking establishment. It is not a proposed drinking establishment, as you would normally think of, in terms of a tavern or a bar, but the state licensing for alcohol and beverage control does not distinguish betweens the types of drinking establishments. And so, the application before you is to allow a drinking establishment license to be issued in the C4 Central Business District. And the property we're discussing is the Fine Arts Cinema, and that was established in 1996, and the facility opened in 1997, and has been in continuous operation since that time. In 2001, the zoning ordinance for the C4 District was amended that said all drinking establishment licenses where there's not a restaurant involved, where there would be the serving of alcoholic beverages, has to be approved as a conditional use. And so, this application is probably most similar to a 2008 Planning Commission application that was submitted by the Stiefel Theater. And what they were doing prior to that time, the state law allows you to have up to four events in a year, serving alcoholic beverages on a temporary license basis, and they were finding more and more events wishing to do that, so they decided to have their own license. And I think that would be the case here. Of course, the primary purpose of this facility is going to remain as a theater, and so the consumption of alcohol would only be secondary to that use. But this is under state law, would be a drinking establishment with a drinking establishment license, and due to its location in the C4 Central Business District, it needs to be reviewed and approved by you prior to issuance of a license. So your role here today is to look at whether the sale of alcoholic beverages at this location would have a negative impact on the public or surrounding area. So, we don't have food sales here, except for concessions, and so, again, this is not a traditional bar or drinking establishment. And so, looking at the welfare and convenience of the public, this could provide another before or after event gathering space for theater-going. It does allow theater management to broaden the types of events held at the theater. It's a potential additional source of revenue for the theater operation. It provides a potential gathering space, and would strengthen the image of downtown as an entertainment district. As we understand, that the hours that beverages would be served would be based on the scheduled time of movie showing and events. What we're not clear on at this point is if there are plans to rent the facility out where there wouldn't be regular scheduled showing of the movies, or whether there'd be outside users of that. So, we would request that the applicants provide a little bit of note on that. We also, on the health and safety side of things, wanted to point out that there are public safety considerations that come into play when you introduce alcohol sales and consumption where you have auditorium seating. So, if you have a large assembly area, you need to look carefully at the number of egress points, emergency lighting, easily identifiable exits, smoke detectors, and building sprinkling. And it's my understanding that this facility is not sprinkled, but only the basement of this building is. And the reason that is important is that our life safety codes differentiate between places where the occupants may be impaired, or their reflexes impaired by alcohol. There are different things that need to be looked at in terms of exiting or evacuation. So, one thing we've asked the applicant to clarify is what portion of this theater that alcohol would be served and consumed in. As far as the impact on public property, you've got a street and public sidewalk on the east side, a public parking lot on the west. The closest drinking establishment to this property is the Ultra Lounge on the east side of Santa Fe, and then you also have Martinelli's, a restaurant that serves alcohol just to the south. Public parking lot behind provides parking spaces, and there's also parking south of Walnut that's used by Stiefel, Martinelli's, and to the clients and patrons here. If the lobby only is the proposed serving area, then the size of that is relatively small, roughly an occupant load of 50 compared to what was originally shown as 104 in the theater itself. I think they've indicated that their seating capacity at this point is about 96. One thing was not clear on was whether, for receptions or private events, whether the stage area at the front of the auditorium might be used as part of that area. You've got the lobby, and then the entrance into the theater seating area, and then you've got a front area up here. So, we would request that the applicant provide some additional information about the type of private events that might be held here, and the supervision of those events. There should not be any impact on public utilities and services, and as you know, in the downtown district, businesses are not required to provide their own off-street parking, and adding alcohol beverages to this theater shouldn't impact parking, and most of the peak parking for this facility is when other nearby businesses are closed. So, to kind of summarize, there's about 350 square feet usable space there. The plan is to set up a portable bar in that lobby area. We have no kitchen facility, but there is a concession stand and drink dispensary. This is not a dance floor or a dance club, and to the best of our knowledge, there would be no live music in any of the events. There's no outdoor patio and serving area, and we do have, we do not have set hours of operation. We would hope the applicant would help us with that. The nearest church, school, or daycare is the Emmanuel Lutheran Church, which is about 900 feet to the south. There are a number of lofts in the vicinity, including upstairs in this building, and they could be potentially impacted, but to our knowledge, based on the letters that were sent out, we've not received any feedback on this application. So, our distance to the nearest drinking establishments are 500 feet to the Ultra Lounge, and 100 feet to the Stiefel Theater across the street. Your options in looking at this would be to approve the application as requested, without any special conditions. You could approve the application subject to conditions or revisions to the plan that you think are appropriate. You could postpone consideration if you think you need additional information to take action, or you could deny this application if you think this would be incompatible with surrounding neighborhood. One thing we request for your consideration is that the Art Center clarify what the intended serving area and license premises would be. If it includes the auditorium, there may be a need for additional consultations with the fire department. So, we've recommended some possible conditions there, and the reason on the first one, that the license premises shall not include the auditorium area, was on the chance that that was the license premises, was the lobby area only. And we brought that up only because at the Stiefel Theater, the only place where alcohol can be served and consumed is in the Watson Room, and not in the auditorium itself. But if it does include the auditorium, then only the part there that deals with corresponding to the approved floor plan. And then, if there were any major modifications to this, this would come back to you for an amendment of this conditional use permit. And item three there is just to clarify that if it does include the auditorium, then the Art Center Board and staff would work with the city fire department and building services to make sure that any life safety features that need to be enhanced would be done so in the future. So, in terms of the impact on neighbors or the surrounding area, I don't believe that including the auditorium area as a licensed premises is a concern, only internally for life safety concerns, and exiting would having the auditorium be a concern. But again, for comparison purposes, the seating capacity here is about 100, and at the Stiefel Theater, it's 1,300. So, it's not an apples-to-apples comparison. But I'd be happy to address any questions you have. Otherwise, we'd hear from representatives of the Art Center.
Questions of staff? Maybe hear from the applicant. And if you would, please state your name and address. Thank you.
Good afternoon, gentlemen. My name is Chris Cook. I reside at 242 West Ellsworth Avenue, and I am representing the Salina Art Center as its current executive director. And just to further discuss some of the issues that were raised by staff, the license is for, the request for the license is for the entire premises of the building, which would include the lobby and the auditorium. And regarding facility rentals, we offer, the Art Center offers all of its facilities, all three of them downtown, to Art Center members and non-members as rental space for private functions. Oftentimes, when we've rented the cinema out, it is for small gatherings, usually for business owners and their staff and/or clientele. That offers them an opportunity to show a specific film that is in line with their business, and oftentimes, that is either prefaced or offer a post kind of reception with beer, wine, and appetizers. So, these rentals at the cinema, since the space is so unique in its design, it really limits the types of rental functions that can actually take place. And of course, we are very selective when it comes to opening our facilities to outside groups.
Do you have, or does the alcohol beverage control impose any conditions on hours of operation or whatever for your private events?
The beer and wine that would be sold would be primarily for visitors to the cinema, so movie-goers, and that would be served just before and during our regular screening hours, Monday through Sunday. As for the rentals, oftentimes, the rentals for private functions are before or after a screening, or they could at times take the place of a screening, which we have done in the past. So, hours fluctuate.
Can you help me understand why we need alcohol for a movie? I can understand the receptions and the parties, but if you're going to serve this to regular movie-goers, I can't have a drink at a regular cinema. Can you help me with that?
Sure. It is, as, for those of you that attend movies at the Art Center Cinema, you understand that the cinema offers a unique cinema experience in terms of the cinema, books, films, that would not otherwise come to Salina. So, the movie theater at the mall, or for that matter, in many, you know, areas close to Salina. And the board and the staff of the Art Center see that providing alcoholic beverages to movie-goers provides them with another amenity that would be unique to your cinema experience
Any other questions or comments?
Did we correctly describe that the idea was to essentially, you'd have a portable bar that'd be set up in this area, or is it going to be a permanent item, or would it come and go as set up as needed?
It would be, as of right now, the plan is to have a mobile bar, so that it could be moved around the lobby, depending on the crowd that we're expecting, and whether or not the bar would be used for a private event, or just for our daily screening movies and general public.
I have a question I probably should ask Dean. How is this any different than the new bar facility that's in the community theater, the live theater? I know that Wichita, Kansas City, there are movie houses now that have full food service and have bars as a normal marketing thing.
Right. Yeah, I think, I mean, across the country, you see a larger trend going towards providing these types of establishments, these kind of brew-in-view type business structures. In terms of the community theater, I don't see a huge difference.
Yeah, the only difference here is that the community theater is not part of the C4 Central Business District, so that wasn't under a review like this is.
But it does have liquor service.
Yes.
It has about three times the capacity of this theater.
Yeah. This, taking into perspective, this is essentially a 25-foot wide storefront, so it's a long and narrow space here.
Well, Dean, if it's the will of the commission to pass this, would we want to postpone it until the additional consultation with the fire department could occur, or could we make that part of the motion?
No, I think what the idea is, and condition number three, is that it's been clarified that it, and that was what the fire marshal had requested, is just to receive clarification whether the license premises included the auditorium area, and the way that that worked with the Stiefel is that the Planning Commission approved it, and then the fire marshal scheduled a time to go over and work with the Stiefel staff, and they would similarly come over to the cinema here and just look at the exiting, the lighting, the smoke detectors, that, and just see if any enhancements are needed, and work from there. But we think that if you clarify that the license premises is the entire premises, then condition number three would allow the fire marshal to work with the staff and the Art Center Board to make any enhancements that are needed.
Are you comfortable with that, sir?
What you're looking at is whether you think adding alcohol service here would somehow negatively affect any neighboring properties.
Any other questions for the applicant? We'll bring it back to the commission. Gentlemen, do you have any questions or comments, or further remarks?
Public hearing.
Oh, we need the public, I apologize. Is there anyone from the public that wants to comment on this application? There being none, we'll bring it back to the commission. Gentlemen, are there any remarks?
I think it's an okay idea. It can't hurt their marketing, and it can't hurt the community. I would want it to be where it is available. Instead of buying an iced tea, I'll buy a beer, and a popcorn, and sit down in the film. So, I want it to be across the whole theater, so you can take the beverage into the theater during the show. So, I'd like that taken out of the parentheses, out of the condition number one. But otherwise, I think...
What you're saying is that the approved floor plan is the entire theater?
The entire building should be available, or the entire ground floor of the building, not the, there's a basement under there, isn't there?
Correct, yeah.
You don't let the public into the basement, anyway.
No, no.
But, yeah, and actually, the plan that you have up there is not the way it was built. That must be some preliminary.
Right, yeah, that's a preliminary architectural plan, that's...
Because the counter and everything's flipped from that.
Exactly.
Changed something.
It's on the north side of the lobby instead of the south side.
So, that's not the correct plan anyhow. The sketch that was included in our packet is...
That's accurate.
...correct. So, I think we're ready for the...
Ready for a motion, yes.
Call that a motion, then. I thought that suggested the application number CU 11-9 be approved for the entire premises and subject to the three conditions listed at the back of the staff report.
Is there a second?
Second.
Been moved and seconded, are there other remarks? All in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. Seven. Oh, thank you very much.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Chris will be getting the other letter that'll summarize today's action, so if you need to furnish that to the state or whatever.
Moving on to item number three, application CU 11-10, also a request for a conditional use permit.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's been a little bit of discussion and confusion about this particular application. One thing we wanted to clarify is that we have two different boundaries that we're working with here, and the boundary of the Lee District, or the Business Improvement District, goes down the center of 8th Street. But the C4 zoning district, which is our central business district, includes the City County Building, includes this property over here, and actually comes over all the way to 9th Street. So, our BID boundary is here, our zoning boundary is the center of 9th Street. So, this particular location is across the street from where we are today, the City County Building. It was originally a building constructed in the 1960s as a filling station. Some of you may remember that it was a rainbow bakery store for an outlet for baked goods for a long period of time, and then it was rented out to, as a site for underground audio, and also for the grind. That business closed its doors in February 2011, and the building has remained vacant until now. Rhymold Properties was the longtime owner. The property is currently owned by Lor Enterprises, which is Lonnie Wilson, and it's under lease to JRI Investments LLC. And so, we had informed the owner, Mr. Wilson, that we had heard some discussions about the possibility of a pawn shop being located in that building, and so, we sent a letter to Mr. Wilson informing him to please inform his tenants that if there was an intent to operate a pawn shop in that location, that would require the approval of a conditional use permit. So, at the time that the sign went up across the street, we were able to identify who the tenant and potential operator of that facility was, and this conditional use permit application was filed. We have tried to provide for you in your packet some background information about pawn shops, the nature of the business, how they operate. Our research, we found that there are currently 124 pawn shops operating in the state of Kansas, and there's several things that are regulated. One, from a law enforcement standpoint, deals with the purchase and sale of firearms, and then the other aspect of that deals with interest rates that pawn shops can charge. And so, those are two items that are regulated by the state of Kansas. The location of pawn shops is a local regulatory matter. And so, it was determined back in the last round of amendments for the C4 District uses that pawn shops should be in the conditional use category. So, your job today is to evaluate the proposed use of this property, and determine whether a pawn shop in the location across the street would be compatible with surrounding uses. And this public hearing process allows neighboring property owners to know about the change in use, and offer any comments or input they have. So, again, we've looked at permitted and conditional uses periodically in the downtown area, most recently in 2008, and during that 2008 round of amendments, pawn shops were placed in the conditional use category. And so, we had some discussion here recently about tattoo parlors in the downtown business district, and you recently approved an amendment to put tattoo parlors and body piercing studios back into the conditional use category, and an application for a conditional use permit was approved on East Iron, to the east of the City County Building. So, one thing here to look at is the welfare and convenience of the public, and the applicant states that this type of establishment serves members of the public seeking small collateral loans on a short-term basis, and these type of short-term loans are otherwise unavailable from conventional lenders. Also, goods and products will be offered to the public for sale at prices below regular retailers. The other thing, of course, is if you approve this conditional use permit, you would restore a vacant building on the edge of downtown back to active use. So, the question in this case is whether you believe filling the space with a pawn shop would contribute to the welfare and convenience of the public. As far as impact, this is an area that is primarily commercial in nature. You've got the Gold Key Apartments across the street. To the south of the building is a five-to-six-unit apartment house, but we're not doing anything here that should increase traffic or displace parking, because unusual to the C4 District, this building actually has setbacks, and it has its own off-street parking. And what would occur here is not something that would overtax the parking that is available. And looking at the other aspects, you've got the apartment buildings nearby, you have the main entrance to the City County Building, but as a general rule, pawn shops are not high-traffic generators, so the pawn shop is not likely to dominate the immediate neighborhood. On the question of injury to value of other property in the neighborhood, that's mostly a perception issue. As you heard, in the case of the conditional use permit for the tattoo parlor, different business and property owners have different perceptions about the impact or non-impact of those types of uses. So, the question for you to look at here is would the addition of a pawn shop in that location change the character and perception of the Ash Street corridor? Again, this is in, just outside the Lee District, and it is the periphery of the downtown area, but it's not an area where we have an abundance of vacant properties. We don't see any impact on public utilities or services. There's no site or building footprint modifications proposed. Should be no impact on drainage. Again, we believe that we can work with the applicants to come up with a workable parking arrangement. There has been striped spaces over at that location at different points in time. Sometimes, it's been angled parking... Again, we, we believe that we can work with the applicants to come up with a workable parking arrangement. There has been striped spaces over at that location at different points in time. Sometimes it's been angled parking, sometimes it's been straight-in, head-in parking. We would work with the operators to get that area properly striped to, to direct any customers in terms of their off-street parking options. So again, similar to the last item, you could approve this conditional use permit as submitted, finding that the requirements for a conditional use permit have been satisfied. You could approve it subject to certain specified conditions or revisions to the plan. You could postpone consideration if you think you need additional information, or you could deny the application if you think a pawn shop would cause injury to surrounding properties. So again, based on information provided by the applicant, the commission finds that this location would not have a negative impact. You could recommend approval of the conditional use be made to conditions or any other conditions you think are appropriate. We've identified two, that all business be conducted within the building, that no vehicles, trailers, or other merchandise be stored outside the building, and that a parking lot layout plan be prepared that, that directs vehicles to exit the side on Eighth Street instead of onto Ash. So again, there is an area here and parking in behind where vehicles can circulate and, and go out to Eighth Street without having to back directly out. But with that, I'd be happy to address any questions you have about the application. The applicants are here if you have specific questions about the nature of their business or operation.
Questions of staff?
Dean, how many letters were sent out within a, is that a 250-foot?
It was a 200-foot radius. We'd have the, Mr. Thacker owns the property across the street. Obviously, the city notified itself at the City-County Building, and then the land to the west was purchased by the building authority for a parking lot, and then we have the private owners to the south. Have to ask Mr. Ryan if he got a letter. I don't know if Ryan Mortuary, I think, was in a 200-foot radius, but the, the primary private owners would be Mr. Thacker's over here, this is a public lot here, and then Ryan Mortuary's here, this is owned by the building authority. And I believe John, across the street, got a letter, correct?
That's correctly, Dean.
And we got, we got some feedback from them.
And then, help me understand on this for future knowledge, does the road right-of-way be a part of the 200-feet notification?
We just, we measure from this point, and we go out 200 feet from the edge of the property. So yes, this, this right-of-way, right here, and that, that map is, would be measured, you'd take this point and you'd just measure out 200 feet in each direction, but the street's included in that.
How many pawn shops are there in Salina, do we know?
Only one I'm aware of is Bob's Pawn Shop, which was formerly up on North Ninth and is now over on Lincoln. That, that's the only one I'm personally aware of.
Nick's Broadway, two others.
There's two others besides Nick's Pawn Shop. There's Salina Pawn and Jewelry, which is next to the bowling alley on South Broadway, and there's Nick's Pawn Shop right next to Cleveland Arena, 118 South Broadway, and Bob's Pawn Shop. So there's three at the moment.
Other questions of staff? Is the applicant present? Would you like to address the commission?
Hello?
And we do need a name and an address, please, for the record.
I'm Jim Pengra, 950 South Third. I'm here, I'm going to be running, granted the conditional use permit, I'll be running the pawn shop for JRI management. And I believe, I believe first off, Salina can, you know, certainly handle another pawn shop, ours will be a little bit different, it's going to be newer, well-lit, it's not going to be your, the old mom-and-pop dusty pawn shop that you've seen. We're doing some extensive remodeling inside, no walls or anything, but just cleaning it up, making, making everything presentable. We've certainly made the building more presentable than what we took possession of, and we don't have any problem with the parking. As far as exiting onto Eighth Street, there's already, there's already a yellow line that, that shows the customers that just follow, there used to be a drive, drive-up window. We'll just use that as the, as the exit for the, for the property.
Any questions you have?
What will the hours of operation be?
Monday through Friday will be 9:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., and Saturday will be 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m., and will be closed on Sunday.
Have you operated a pawn shop before?
I worked at Nick's Pawn Shop here in Salina for about 16, 17 years. So I'm, I'm familiar with the operation of it. There will be, there is security, there are, we do report everything that's brought into the shop to the police on a daily basis, that's just done through a computer, a computerized transfer. We're not, we're not the fences for stolen merchandise, that, you know, is kind of a, kind of a myth. And, yeah, everything is, everything is recorded, serial number, make, model, who brought it in, driver, driver's license, so, everything is above board.
This may be a question for Dean as well, from there. And this question just directed on there is, if it is approved, just as being a good neighbor, I appreciate the look of the building now. I mean, so you're making a step towards it as being a good neighbor, which is there. Dean, my question would be, as far as the sign coverage, is that the maximum amount that they can have for sign coverage on C4?
It is, it is based on the, the frontage of the building, you get so many square feet for your building frontage, and they have Eighth and the frontage on, on Ash as well. It is within your purview, if, if you want to say, as opposed to having a square footage limit, limit the number of signs and address. I, I believe that, John, it's correct that this used to have a pole sign, correct?
There is a pole sign on the northwest corner of the property, right now it's unused.
So in the C4 district, if you have a property that does not have a zero setback, you may have a pole sign. And so if, if there was anything you wanted to address in terms of limiting the number of wall signs, or you wanted to weigh in on whether a pole sign was allowed, that would be appropriate in terms of conditions of approval.
My question was going with, it looks great now, is what, the plans of temporary banners, and we approve it in two weeks later. And again, the thing that we've always learned, with me being new on the board, is if it's a conditional use permit, it's a conditional use permit, you could sell it tomorrow and your organization could put their best foot forward, and somebody hang a banner clear across the front, and we're walking out the City-County Building, it says Pawn Shop, and, you know, pawn your VCRs today, and cash for gold, and all that stuff, which becomes a totally different scenario than what's available. So I'm not sure what the recommendation would be, but somehow, if we can put that inside there, that no temporary banners and/or any signage larger than what's on there, I think it looks professional the way it is, I think that it proves its point, and I think it looks like, I think, I agree with you, I know the individual who's helping that, I think he does a fine job, and I think it'll be a great asset if it continues to stay like that. And I'm, I'm trying to make a motion or talk to my peers here to say, how do we make it continue to stay looking like that, and not a bunch of sale banners and gold banners everywhere?
We have no intention of putting, putting banners on. We do have, we do have the sign for the pole sign, but we're going to hold off. We figured we caused enough ruckus when we put, when we put the one sign on the front of the building, so I talked to Nancy Hedges, she goes, well, what about the other one, Jim? I says, let's wait to see if we get it approved before I have you put that one up there.
The C4 district, which this is a part of, allows up to four signs per business. So if you wanted to deviate from that, or make it more restrictive than four signs per business, you could, you could do that.
There's no square footage on that?
There, there is a square footage limit as well, but some of our other districts don't have a limitation on the total number of signs, just a square footage limit. This has a square footage limit, but it allows you to distribute that over up to, up to four signs. So if you think that, that four signs is, is too many, then you want, if you wanted to say, subject to having one wall sign and one pole sign, or something to that effect, that's within your discretion.
So how big is the pole sign?
That's a, that's a, I think that's a four-by-four sign. And all, all that says, all that is, says is Pawn Shop. Just, just white-faced, black letters, Pawn Shop.
And you're going to be handling firearms?
Yes.
What, what is the law on that? I mean, is there, how much waiting time is it?
Up to three working days, which translates to a week. That's on a case-by-case basis, when we, when we call the FBI to, to do the background check on the individual. We'll, we'll adhere to all stated federal laws as far as that goes.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. May we hear from the public? If anybody would like to address this issue?
I have another question for me. And the sign is already made that just says Pawn Shop. White with black.
There'll be no, there'll be no-
And, and, yeah, no, that's not surprising, it's not helping the matter for me, that's what I'm saying on there, that's why I'm, I'm not, it's not helping me. So it's not like you're saying, oh, it's not going to be no surprise, it's just that's not helping me in the decision of-
It's a small sign, and there just wasn't, there wasn't enough room to put a lot of things on there, to make the sign look dizzy. And that's mainly going to be visible through-
I kind of have the same-
And one of the things that we wanted to clarify, for the benefit of the commission, of the distinction of being in the Lee District versus being outside, the Lee District has a set of design guidelines for exterior modifications and signage, and if you change out your facade, or you change out signage in the C4 District, that goes before the Downtown Design Review Board. This property being just outside the Lee District is not subject to those Downtown Design Review Board reviews, so therefore you are the reviewers. So there's not going to be any review by the Downtown Design Review Board of what occurs here on the exterior or in the way of signage. So you are the final reviewers.
I think I'm thinking the same way Commissioner Welsh is, and I started to comment that you've got a lot of residential to the west of you and, and north, and south of you as well, so the signage that faces that direction kind of bothers me, what faces City-County, and what's the rest of the C District is, doesn't seem as intrusive to me, but you have an apartment complex with six or eight or 10 apartments in it right behind you, and I'm feeling that the residents aren't going to want to stare at a big sign up there.
How the sign is, it faces, it faces, it's readable from, on the west, on the east and the west side.
But it's on the north corner of the building? Northwest?
Has the pole been removed?
No, I think it's still there.
I think it's still there. Mr. Pengra, could you go to the microphone so we can get your comments?
No, the pole is still there.
Where is it?
It's barely visible, but it is in that location.
It's back there by the dumpster, huh?
I thought that was part of the Welsh-
But it's correct that it faces either way on Ash Street.
Well, I'm, again, I'm, for whatever it's worth of commissioners, I don't mind the conditional use permit, but I think the signage on there is, makes it classy, it's, it's approved, I just can't, I can't imagine adding the word Pawn Shop to that district is going to do anything but deviate from the neighbors that are there. I'm okay with a wall-mounted sign, but the sign there, putting that on there, just, I mean, again, I don't mind money lenders or whatever, but the negative word to Pawn Shop, and I don't mean to do anything injustice to your business.
Right.
I'm just trying to state a fact of what I think the community may feel of that.
Thank you. Back to the public?
Andy, you've got property next to it, do you have something to say?
Yeah, I was going to ask you a question. Andy Heidrick, 419 Country Club Road, and I have an office building at 146 North Ninth Street. And you've covered some of the concerns that I had. My main concern is, what about outside storage? The pawn equipment and things are too large to be inside the building. Is there going to be a fenced, is there going to be a fence put in for those items, or what, what does, is the plan there?
The recommendation that we have on page seven of the staff report would be that all business would be conducted within the enclosed building, and that no vehicles, trailers, or other merchandise would be stored outside. So if, if they do take on something that's too large to handle inside the building, then it would need to be stored elsewhere. So that is our recommendation, that everything related to this operation be conducted inside the building. And so if, if there were items outside, then we would consider that to be in violation of this conditional use permit, as, as we're recommending it.
Okay, that's, that's the only concern that I had at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Gentlemen, we'll bring it back to the commission. Do you, anybody have questions or comments?
I think as many empty buildings we have downtown, anytime we can bring a business into this area, it's, it's a good business. Pawn Shop has some history of, of not being the, that most favored business you'd want to put in a downtown area, but that's a pretty secure building, it doesn't look like it's going to have be bars on windows and things like that to keep people from breaking into it. I like that. I like that it doesn't, it doesn't have a lot of windows and places to put banners and, and things inside the building. I don't see any real reason why we should stop a business from being downtown in, in the area that they're looking at. I, I would like to see the signage issue taken care of. Looks to me like it's in good shape at, at this point. Don't see any problem with the pawn shop being there.
If we were to make a motion that the sign be limited to existing signage at the size that currently exists, and no additional signage, can we also, Dean, add to that motion that the professional look of the building must be maintained? In other words, not let it drift back to what it was previous to this with the paintings on the outside? Can that be part of a conditional use permit as well?
Well, the, if, if that is the limitation, one of the questions, of course, of what occurred before is, one interpretation of what was there before was that it was signage, and the other interpretation could be that it was art, but the, the way that that would be structured is that you would not expect anybody to do any hand lettering of, of signs or messages, anything on the exterior of the building. If you limit it to the existing wall sign, the present square footage, they would not be able to go in and, and paint other advertising messages or anything on the, on the wall.
I like that.
And one other perspective, I guess I'd like to mention is, and since we didn't have anybody mention it from, on behalf of the city of Salina, but as the planning commission, and we spend a lot of time talking about gateways and the perspective of the public viewing our city, how does the city of Salina feel about having a pawn shop across the street from, from itself, and how does that reflect on the image of Salina? That I'm-
Well, you, you are, you are designated representatives to represent our interests, so that, that's actually your, your judgment to make.
I think it's a little more the city commission, because we're appointed, and they're the ones that get voted into that place.
Yeah, and they are, they are aware of this application, but again, the way the system is set up, you are the reviewer of, of conditional uses, and I guess as one- And I guess as one who's office window oversees this property, it's much more attractive to look at today than it was previously. So I think all credit needs to go to the investment group that has put all the effort to improve the image and look of this building. So I would tend to agree with Mr. Bossmeyer that the way that this building is set up with not a lot of window space or things like that, I think the relatively clean look of the building will be pretty easy to maintain. So I think that does make it more suitable than maybe some other types of locations.
Back on the sign, if we were to approve this with just the present wall sign, can we also require that the, that the old pole sign be removed?
If it is, if there's not any authorization for a replacement sign on there, then at some point, the pole and supports would need to be removed from the property because it would then be an abandoned sign if it can't be reused. There's no argument for leaving it to support a future pole sign if you say that it's limited to wall signs only.
Is the city or the building authority going to have any signage on that parking lot?
Not that I'm aware of. If it was, it would be probably a traffic control type sign, similar to what's over at Seventh Street. Very small.
Gentlemen, are we ready for a motion?
So again, we've identified two conditions there on page seven. And if you want to address signage in some fashion, then that could be incorporated as a third condition, if you're comfortable with those two.
I'll make a motion to approve CU 11-10 with staff recommendations number one, also staff recommendation number two, and adding a third for the, limiting the signage for the conditional use permit as to the sign that is currently on the building, and not being able to add any additional banners and/or signage, including the pole sign, for the approval of the conditional use permit.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The motion passes seven to nothing. Thank you very much.
No, we still, we're not quite happy.
Item number four, application PDD 81-4L. This is a request, requesting an amendment of the Central Mall PDD and a change of zoning district.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I wanted to explain that there is two aspects of this. One is the public hearing aspect of that. And the public hearing portion of this is a public hearing to consider whether the zoning and land use of the north portion of the mall site, north of the Dillard's store, should go from a residential classification and plan to a commercial designation, similar with the rest of the mall. The other thing that is somewhat confusing is that the outlots that are south of the J.C. Penney store, while they are zoned as part of the C3 mall district, are actually limited to office use. And what you have at your places up there, because we have enough, I think, exhibits as it is, you have elevation drawings of the office buildings that were presented to the Planning Commission when the mall project was originally approved. And then you also have elevation drawings of what the apartment buildings would look at like. And I guess, John, we might start with the PDF of the zoning map down toward the bottom. And I was going to try to find the remote microphone so I could roam around and point in the map, but I'm going to have to rely on my laser pointer.
Dean? I don't know what's over here, but maybe if I didn't say something.
You were going to have a song and dance for us, right?
Flash mob.
I've heard from the cable access folks that as I'm talking over towards the screen, they can't hear me because I'm away from the microphone. So just to explain, what we are talking about is, these are existing homes on Wayne Avenue. This was a row of single-family lots that was platted to serve as a buffer between the mall and these homes. And then as a further buffer, this was zoned for apartment development. Then we had some outlots down here that, or actually here, that show up as C3, but in the planned development district, they were actually limited to office use only. So the focus of our request area is this property right here and this property right here. So the parties most affected by any zoning change would be these homeowners here and then property owners opposite on Magnolia Road. This property over here changed in 1995 when there was an apartment project that was built there. But the request is to take this and this and this and make everything here C3. So the public hearing aspect of this is to consider whether that zoning change should be made. There are some other aspects of this that we'll get into, the details of what shape that development might be in. But we think that the fundamental question today, after you get input from neighboring property owners and address questions, is should the zoning and land use designation for the area north of the mall itself be changed from residential to commercial? So we had a original zoning approval in 1982. In 1986, the mall developer, Warmac Companies, came back with a final plan. And that is where those drawings that you have in front of you there said, they told the Planning, City Commission, and Neighbors, this is what the offices and apartments would look like. In 1990, there was an amendment to the original mall that allowed for the Sears store. So the plan that you have right here, this is the 1990 plan that the Planning Commission and City Commission approved. And so you had this wing here added for Sears. This was set up to be a single-family housing area. This was a row of apartments north of Dillard's. This was a single-family housing buffer strip. And then Highland and Fourth Street connected through. So under this plan, if these apartments were built, the residents would get there through the street system to the north, and it was not tied in with the mall. And this plan had a buffer here, and then there was a tree buffer along here. The other aspect of this that we really just kind of unraveled this morning was that originally, this area here, and we'll probably hear some comments from neighbors on that, that was set up as a temporary drainage easement or detention area. And if you go out there and look at it, there's almost a small levee right here. And the purpose of that was to contain runoff from going north up into this area and make sure that it got over to the pond here or over to the ditches in Ninth Street. But it was to keep the runoff from migrating up into this area. So looking back at the history of the mall, the drainage aspect of it was very important. But this approved plan that we're operating under now has outlots along Ninth Street. It had four office outlots along here. It had multi-family area here that allowed up to 96 apartment units. And then it had 17 lots up here that were single-family, and it had 39 lots over here for single-family. Then in 1995, the Chapel Ridge Apartments went in, and that area was replaced. And this area went from that to the present configuration that we have now. But John, if you could go back to the very first slide, which this, this is probably one of the most important, this is the single most important aspect of the planned development district. This is basically a note lettered on the, on the approved plan. And so basically what it's saying is, these lots here under B, although they're zone C3, they are limited to what C1 allows, which is offices only south of J.C. Penney. So what the applicant is requesting is that this restriction limiting it to office and C1 uses be lifted, and that all C3 uses be allowed there. And then they're requesting that this be amended so that rather than limiting development to multi-family residential, that that also becomes C3. And then the northernmost tier of lots, instead of R1, single-family, become C3. So basically, what they're wanting to do is eliminate these, and basically, the entire mall property would be a C3 shopping center district. So that is the real purpose of the public hearing today, is to see if that zoning change should be approved. But the basic goal, the result would be, you'd have a single 92-acre C3 zone lot, and then we would use the planned development district overlay to create individual building tracks and designate one for the detention pond. So the other aspect of this that is important is that, you know, planned development districts are considered to be what you see is what you get zoning. And so one of the items that was of concern as we started getting questions from neighboring property owners is questions about drainage, questions about buffering, questions about location or scale. It may be premature to ask for too much detail out of the mall representatives at this time, but at the same time, in 1980, and 81, and 86, and 90, and 95, there were plans presented that neighbors could view at a public hearing to see what was proposed in the way of development for that area. And presently, what we have is a proposed track, development track 12. And I guess that would be item 10, John. So this is what has been submitted. And essentially, this would be development tract 12. And the request is to take this entire area here and rezone it to C3 for commercial development. And then you've got outlots. This is undeveloped. This is Chili's, David's Bridle, IHOP, undeveloped, and on down the line. And then this is the mall itself. What we do not have is a concept plan for, are we talking about multi, multiple buildings, multiple tracks? Single building, single tract, located towards the front with parking here or back here with parking here. And our understanding is that the circulation pattern would be to connect this back to this entrance here, and street connections here and here would be eliminated. The comprehensive plan basically says that the Central Mall site and the South Ninth and Magnolia intersection is a commercial area. The land use plan does show a small sliver of urban residential up at this corner right here, but basically says that the Central Mall site is future commercial on the land use plan. So that is, I don't think it's out of the character for the plan to look at expanded commercial in this area. But there are a number of items there we've identified on page three that this site meets. But it also, the plan also suggests to look at ingress and egress points. And then it also says, transitions between commercial development and less intense adjacent uses should minimize the impacts of night, of noise, light, traffic, operations, and intensity of commercial uses. And so we feel as a staff to really properly address that, we may need more information than what we have for this hearing. But some of the factors on the zoning request that you are to consider is, how suitable is the property for development under the existing zoning? This property up here has been zoned and platted for residential development since 1978. I have worked here since 1987. I have never talked to anyone, including mall owners, who are actually interested in developing it residentially. We've had apartment developers and others come to town, and we pointed that property out. But there's never really been anybody to express interest in developing that residentially. And of course, the current mall owner believes that that residential zoning inhibits the future development of the property. As far as the character of the neighborhood, you can tell that the core intersection of South Ninth Street and Magnolia is a retail center for the city and for the surrounding region. The neighborhoods most immediately affected are up here to the north and to the south of the mall, should the C1 go to C3. The comprehensive plan envisions that there should be appropriate buffers between commercial and residential uses. And so one of the things you are to consider is whether the uses and development plan proposed by the mall owner would be compatible with the zoning and existing uses here and here. And that's kind of difficult to address without at least a conceptual plan for future development of the area. So John, I'm going to ask you to go down to slide 18. What I wanted to show here is, without going into great detail, this is a plan the Planning Commission looked at a few years back. This is what we refer to as the Pumpkin Patch or the Dooley Farm on the east side of South Ninth Street, north of, south of the skating rink, north of Sam's Club. There was a proposal, somebody had an option to purchase that and develop it, and there was a public hearing. And of course, you've got homeowners all along Highland on this side here. This is a pretty conceptual plan. But what the owners, or prospective owners and developers showed the neighbors and the Planning Commission says, if you approve commercial zoning, what the concept we're envisioning would look like this, and we'd have a 40-foot buffer over here, and this would be detention and that. So what we're talking about for tract 12 would not necessarily be a detailed plan with uses identified and things like that. But we think we could get closer to at least having a concept plan for showing what would occur on lot 12, or tract 12, if that was zoned for commercial use. We think most of the infrastructure in place, water, sanitary sewer, gas, and electric would support commercial development north of the mall itself. The pond is sized to address runoff. The pond is sized to address runoff. Even if this area were converted from apartment to commercial use, the pond is large enough. The question then becomes if this is temporary detention today and it's built over, how do we ensure that that is done? And basically, you can almost see it right here, but basically, from here to here, this is like a temporary drainage conduit that equalizes the flows between Ninth Street and the pond area here. So this change would go from residential, commercial, but it should not place any additional burden on public facilities and services compared to 96 apartment units. So based on occupancy and building sizes and all, there may be a need for some utility upgrades or inspections. But the fire protection here is currently provided by Station 3 on Belmont with backup from Station 2 on Santa Fe. We've outlined for you some alternatives on the zoning question. We've outlined your site plan review procedures. And I said, the primary challenge here is that we don't have a site plan or a concept plan to really address things that might address concerns from neighboring property owners. But some of the questions that we've heard from neighboring owners include how will this, if this goes to commercial, how will it impact site drainage? How will runoff get to the detention pond? There was a line of Scotch pine trees at the north edge of the mall property behind the Wayne properties. A lot of those have died. A lot of them have been cut down. So there are questions about the width and type of buffering that might occur along the north boundary. As we explained, the plan is that this street wouldn't get built and these connections to Highland and forth wouldn't be made. We may want to preserve this corridor for pedestrian and bicycle access, but the, from a traffic impact, this plan should actually benefit the owners to the north because it would ensure that those street connections did not get made. And then a fourth question is, we've got some vacant commercial zone property on the mall site itself. Is there justification for additional C3 zoning? So as we reviewed this application, as we heard from neighboring property owners, we were having a harder and harder time answering questions about compatibility and buffering and things of that nature. So what we think this proposal needs to be broken down into basically two questions. And the first question is, should the zoning be changed from residential to commercial on the north and from office to commercial on the south? And to get feedback on that today. If that recommendation is favorable, then we can work with the mall owners and Cow Valley Engineering to address a couple of these technical items. And some of those are plat-related. But I hope that that frames the issue for you. The first and most important issue is what, should the land use be in this area? Should it be maintained as residential or should it be maintained as commercial? And as to the importance of site drainage, just in our research of this, the plat for the central mall was filed in 1981, and it was approved by the planning commission in 1985. And those four years were spent resolving drainage issues related to the central mall. So our review with the assistance of Mr. Stack, earlier today, we found that there was a great deal of attention paid to drainage, both onsite and impacts on the surrounding area. So with that, I'd be happy to address any questions you have. But the first public hearing aspect of this is on the zoning question. Should the zoning be changed here to allow commercial development and to take the office restriction off here? And if you are favorable to that, then we would work to get more detail so we could pin down some things relating to setbacks, buffering strips, things of that nature before there was any formal approval of the changes to the planned development district.
Questions of staff? Dean, was the residential apartments that were planned in there that are in this plan were provided, were those three-story? Are they similar to the Chapel Ridge that was on the other side?
I think they would be similar in appearance to the Chapel Ridge and also probably similar in design. And appearance to the apartments over on South Ohio across from Jerry Ivy Park, they would be multi-story, eight to 16.
So conceptually, they were taller than the mall building is now when it was originally proposed?
In that neighborhood. And going back and just reviewing that, basically, the city commission eventually dropped that proposal, but their original approval said that 30% of the housing units shown on the plan had to be built before the mall could begin construction. And that requirement was later dropped. But the idea was to, that these people all bought homes not knowing that this was going to be a mall. And so, the mall developer was required to put in a residential buffer here and here so that anybody that bought or built here would know that they were adjacent to a mall, basically forcing Warmack and Company to create their own buffer strip.
Dean, if you will, in C3, how much of that, how much of C3 lots that are planted C3 can be paved? What percent?
You can, you can cover up to 40% of the area with building. You can, there's no cap on impervious surface, but there are landscaping provisions that a certain percentage of that has to be maintained as green space. But I would say that on our outlots or typical green space sites, the ratio is about 80% paved or building and 20% green space.
And the purpose for the question is if that drainage swale that runs through those residentially-platted lots at this time is critical now, it'll become even more critical in some fashion if that's Zone C3 and ends up paving?
Right. And that's why getting some, what, like I said, we don't need detail on uses and building design and everything like that, but getting a concept for how this north area might develop would help everybody understand what kind of buffer strip we might be maintaining here and how much of that little drainage swale that you have going through there could be preserved.
Thank you.
Won't the street serve as a conduit for most of the water drainage anyway? When you put that street through there from Fourth to Highland, won't that direct the water?
But this plan would ensure that that street doesn't ever get put in. The plan-
I'm just saying, if you left it residential, I mean, doesn't that, the plan we have right now, doesn't it control the water because of the street?
Well, the drainage, according to the drainage plan that was approved for the mall site, it was designed so that 97% of the property would drain to the pond and 3% would drain north up to Wayne Street. And that 3% would primarily have been up Highland and up Fourth Street. So if these streets don't go through, then we need to ensure that whatever gets built here, that the runoff is directed back to the pond.
The ditch is really, it's bigger than a street. It's quite a bit bigger. It's 100 foot wide and two foot deep, so it would be a monster drainage ditch that would, if you had to put a street in there to contain that.
What was the plan then initially if that swell wasn't put in there? I mean, I know you weren't here, but-
Well, here, he was here, he just-
Yeah.
We're looking to see if it was an error of omission or commission, but the note here says that in this area up here, that the single-family dwellings up there, it says that 15 additional units could be built here upon release of a temporary drainage easement at the north boundary of this tract. And so, what was designed is that this was an interim draining solution. And then when the mall owners came up with something to take its place, then this, these lots here could be built upon. But basically, this is a, this swath right here is a drainage easement. And that is information that we came upon today as we were preparing for this hearing. It appears that inadvertently or intentionally, that drainage easement may have been released or at least not carried over in the last replat. But the idea was that nothing could be built on this area up here until there was a plan to replace this swale right there. And so, that, to give you a perspective, the overall plan that was first approved had 45 single-family home lots. It had a total of 249 multifamily housing units. It had authorized up to 50,000 square feet of office space and 428,000 square feet of retail space in the enclosed mall. And so, that was the very original plan. And the very original plan had 97% of the site draining into the pond. And so, the size of the pond is not, and the capacity of the pond is not at issue. This was put in to ensure that water that formerly migrated to the north got intercepted and either sent here or here. So if this swale is eliminated and covered with paved parking or anything building-related, then an alternate plan for making sure the water gets there needs to be in place. So we just wanted to, we had questions from the neighboring property owners on Wayne that asked how this proposal would affect the drainage structure here that was put in at their request in the 1980s. And we, our first question is what drainage structure are you referring to? And so, we had to go back to those plans to find what Mr. Stack was referring to. It's basically, it's 100 foot wide, shallow, two foot deep swale that runs through there that is, that serves as kind of an auxiliary detention area. And as we noted, many of the Scotch pine trees that were planted in the 1980s in the back of the lots on Wayne have died and been cut down. So part of the question that neighboring property owners have had is what would go back in its place and how wide that would be. So those are types of more detailed questions that we don't think we can address at this point, other than to say we think it's justifiable to expect those to be addressed.
No other questions of staff? We'll hear from the applicant. Would you like to address this application? Your name and address, please.
Ben Lair, 1812 West Alavera Drive, Phoenix. As he's pointed out, we're looking at rezoning this to be a commercial aspect. We don't believe that the residential zoning is currently viable. There was a question from the neighborhood of why we need additional commercial zoning there. We've had some interest from commercial tenants. That property is visible from Ninth Street, has better access. The other property onsite either is not large enough or has poor visibility.
Oh, can you pull the mic a little closer though? They're having trouble in the back to hear you.
Sure. The question as to the drainage, obviously, we've engaged Cow Engineering to handle any civil engineering onsite. With all our, all plans, drainage has to be addressed so that it does not leave the property or is handled within the property. And we intend to follow that. As we do designs for specific tenants, it will be engineered so that the drainage either uses the existing pond, which we believe is of capacity to support the additional or create additional drainage within the site for any site drainage. We, obviously, none of the water will leave or impact the residence. The fact that it's being used as a temporary auxiliary, I don't know if that was the intent, but we intend to contain 100% rather than the 97. Other questions as far as buffering? We understand the existing zoning compliance and we're not looking for any kind of variance on that. What we would like to see is to start with getting it commercially zoned and then working with the planning commissioner or the staff to appropriately buffer the residents. We do want to be good neighbors to the existing residents and we understand that there is a existing precedent there. So we want to maintain our good neighbor status with them. And we'd like to, we'd like to get it first commercially zoned and work with staff on any specific building approvals as they come through with our specific tenants. We do not have a concept to share with you right now as we don't have specific tenants to work with. And as those tenants change, the concept design changes. We're happy to present something at each step as we get further along in the process, the first step being commercial zoning.
Questions of the applicant?
At this point, do you have any ideas about changing the access onto Ninth Street if the access is closed to Highland and to Fourth Street?
No, we looked at the current access points and our furthest north current access point, we believe is close enough to the intersection that any further northern access is not viable. So we would maintain the existing access points off of Ninth Street and feed the new commercial from the existing interior ring road.
And if I were looking at a conceptual plan, I think something we haven't talked too much about is, I would be concerned about how we're getting in and out on the south boundary on those properties along the south on Magnolia. Particularly, that intersection to the west is a mess. So there'd have to be some redrafting of the ingress and the egress. So in my time on the commission, we've been looking at all the traffic being internal to the project. So there would need to be good intersection there and then all the rest of the circulation be on the inside. But that'd be a concern of mine personally is that Magnolia has really grown since the mall was built and that's become a really major intersection. And Magnolia's probably going to be the first east-west or through-street in Salina at some point. So the traffic there continues to grow and grow and it's an important artery through the city. So I'm sure the neighbors to the south would appreciate that being well taken care of.
We've had most of the focus on the north, but it is probably correct to say that if you had retail or restaurant uses here, your traffic generation would probably be higher than it would be if it was offices. But the, this is, because of the ditch and other, this is restricted access here, so any development here on the south, the access would be to this north-south road here and to this north-south road as well as any ring road access. But yeah, you would have traffic going here and here, and those would be your exit points.
Mr. Chair? A question, I mean, I don't know if there's any interest on the part of the developer, but would there be any interest on either your part and possibly the city's part? be any interest on either your part and possibly the city's part of considering the request to be modified to C3 on the north side, but dedicating that 100-foot that is now residential as a permanent easement, drainage easement to the city of Salina?
I'd have to have our engineer look at it as a permanent drainage easement. I don't know if that's the way we want to solve our drainage. Our engineers would have to look at it. I think there's better and probably more appropriate ways to solve the drainage rather than an open swale. But again, we'd have to look at it from an engineering standpoint as to whether or not that's the best opportunity to solve it. Obviously, we do want to solve drainage. I don't know if that's the best way.
The dedication of 100-foot has one other advantage besides this drainage. It serves as a buffer between the residences that are in existence on Wayne Street and the potential of C3 development, which has some appeal as well.
Agreed. We could certainly look at any of those.
I'd certainly be more interested in looking at something like that. That natural buffer is really kind of, I think, important from the backyard of those residences that exist there.
And then how much space from the end of the Dillard's parking lot then to the back of the fence line of them on Wayne Street? Is that 500 feet? I don't have a count. 400 foot? So you would still have, with, again, just conceptionally talking on that, if it's 400 feet, you gave away 100 feet, you still got 300 feet.
300 feet.
I'm not a commercial developer, so I don't know what you're, whether 300 feet and you lose 100, whether it becomes ground that's not for a big box store or developer or whatever, whether 300 feet is suitable for that. But anyway, just a thought.
And that's the purpose, is as different tenants come forward, it may or may not be 100-foot maybe a breaking point, or it may be that we could do 80 feet or something. And so I wouldn't want to guarantee 100 feet at this point and know that we're 20 feet short, find out that we're 20 feet short as a specific tenant or use comes in there. There may be a better way to solve it, or in that case, rather than an open ditch, a more heavily planted buffer or a screen wall of some kind that could better shield the residences.
As I'm understanding, you don't want to be limited on your development. On the flip side, the city wouldn't want to be limited either to go ahead and just blindly, in some ways, approve this entire tract without knowing what some of those limitations would be, safeguards from our standpoint, the buffer zones and those types of things. It's understandable, again, that you need some tenants to get some specific information, but to just say that this entire tract is going to be C3 limits us in future to make sure that some of those safeguards are in place for the surrounding property owners and for the city itself as to how we want our properties to be developed, or how they end up looking.
Very understandable. What we are hoping is to get, except just the zoning completed, and then make it contingent upon plan review with a staff approval for any specific planning, so that it's not a carte blanche approval just to build any C3 property within those with a zero lot line or the current, I think it's a 15-foot setback requirement. It would be to work with the planning and the staff approvals for any future development.
Just to clarify for the benefit of the commission, the final plans for whatever development occurs on this proposed tract 12 would not be a staff approval. It would be a planning commission approval. And where we are now is step one of a two-step process. The step one is basically establishing the zoning and then the development parameters and limitations for the site. And to do that, a public hearing and recommendation by the planning commission is required. Then step two would be coming back to the planning commission with a detailed final development plan when there actually is a use proposed or established. Where staff is struggling a little bit is helping. The stage we're at now is to establish parameters that are either established, customized for this particular situation, or you take what would be called the carte blanche approach, and it says whatever C3 allows, it allows. But that kind of defeats the purpose of the original plan. Development district was, would be to establish what those buffers should be and parameters and limitations on height, lot coverage, things of that nature. And we think we can get there and get there without too much trouble, but the first step would be to see if, after hearing all the input at this hearing, you want to make a favorable recommendation on commercial zoning. Then we think some additional work needs to be done to recommend parameters around that commercial designation. So height limits, buffers, things of that nature that we could get there. But there's no point working on that unless the commission is favorably disposed towards commercial zoning for this north piece.
And we have no intent of a pond shop.
We're tattoo parlors.
Tattoo parlors.
But that's a good point, but right now you have no intent, but once it's C3...
Well, and that's, as part of the stipulations defined for the PDD, we would expect that those restrictions would be applicable for our PDD.
Other questions, gentlemen? Thank you very much. I think we'll hear from the public now. Is there anybody in the public section that'd like to address this issue? If you'd come to the podium, please, and state your name and address for the record.
Hi, my name is Kira Treffer. My address is 129 West Wayne, and I'm here to represent on behalf of some of my neighbors behind, but you can probably tell seven or eight of us. We are concerned about the changing of the zoning from residential to commercial, obviously because it runs right back up to our fence. Right now, we have a nice buffer between us. We have a drainage ditch like you all talked about, and then we have a nice buffer between us and Dillard's. If you change that to all C3, it's obvious where that's going, that, you know, a commercial property is probably going to be put in there. At this point, me and my neighbors are concerned about the barrier, like you said, how far out, I mean, right now it looks like the C3 is proposed clear to our fences almost. And we are concerned, you know, about the flood issue, the barrier between us and a potential commercial property, where a commercial property might sit, parking, things like that. We do get some light issues at night from Dillard's already, and if a commercial property goes in there, obviously, all of that will move closer to us. The trash gets emptied at 3:00 a.m. at Dillard's, and, you know, we have lighting issues now. And our barrier currently, as mentioned by Mr. Andrews, is dying and going by the wayside that was established years and years ago from the pine trees. Some other, the flood control ditch that we currently have behind us, I guess they've established it's 100-foot. And it, during heavy rains, I've lived there for seven years, and I'm the newbie on the block, and my neighbors can also speak for me if necessary. But it fills up during heavy rains quite often, and it drains down not only to that ditch over there, however, it also goes by Mr. Headley's house, who is on the end of Wayne, and goes into a drain there as well. So obviously, we don't want water in our backyards, and so the drainage ditch is important to us as well. And how they would address that, we definitely don't want to be sitting on our back deck looking at a big concrete drainage ditch, or however. I'm not sure, certain, as to how they're going to solve that issue as well. We're also, you know, with residential properties, we are, if you put a commercial property, depending on what it could be, may impact our values if we were trying to sell our homes. And I know I bought the home knowing that it was zoned residential behind me, and changing of that is definitely a concern for us. That's all I have.
Are you aware in some of the seasons when it really rained hard, maybe the neighbors could speak to this, '91, '93, there's some years we've had some heavy rains, did you have any problems? Water coming your way?
One year, I know the drainage ditch was probably three-quarters full of the water going down, and it never reached the top.
That swale seems to be working.
It's working well. I've been there since the beginning, and I've never had any come up into my yard near my pond, but it does get full.
We've been there seven years, and we've seen it. I could probably count three times. And one time, it was probably the year after we moved in, it was almost to the top of the drainage ditch. We were concerned at that point.
My kids would have got a boat and got out and got in it.
Mrs. Treffer, if I may, I'd ask you the same question I asked the applicant, is what would you feel about maintaining that buffer of 100-foot, which is now those plots that are designated residential, as some kind of buffer, whether it be a drainage ditch redesigned, a detention pond, or just a 100-foot buffer? Then having C3 beyond that, would that be...
Personally, I mean, this just kind of came up. So personally, I think that's a fair solution for both parties. I definitely would have to check with my neighbors before speaking for everybody, but I think that's a better solution versus running C3 clear up to our fences. However, you know, we like it the way it is.
I understand that.
Ultimately, you know? But we also have concerns as to where the commercial property is, and I understand that that probably depends on who might come in and build and do that, so.
I think it could be a win-win. It could be a win-win for both.
Please come up to the podium, just for the public record and Access TV, so that all the comments can be shared. And yes, if you'd give us your name and your address.
Margaret Weber, and I live just very close to her and the rest of the good people back here. But what I'm, and I understand that the particulars aren't even available yet about what they want to do, or what commercial, is it one commercial building or several commercial buildings or apartments? We don't know, I guess. But anyway, it looks like on the map that you sent us that there is going to be a street from Highland on cut over to Fourth Street. Is that correct?
Not if this, not if this plan...
That street?
That is the current plan.
What? Oh, are you? Okay. So...
That's currently what's available.
Okay. No through. Highland won't go on, and neither will Fourth. Okay.
We will enter from the Ninth Street.
Okay, all right. Well, that's certainly encouraging.
No, that's the existing plan that would be amended.
Okay. All right, that's what I was curious about, a street behind us, too.
Right.
So, yeah, that's mainly what I wanted to find out then, because that looked like on the map. Okay, thank you. That's what I needed to know.
Thank you, Ms. Weber. Are there others? Would you come up, please? Thanks, and your name and address, too, please.
Yeah, my name is Jim Merrick, and I live at 206 East Wayne. I've seen water in Mr. Headley's yard and also my yard. Never to the house, though. But my concern is the flooding and to make sure that the flooding situation is controlled. My opinion is that this year, these concerns should be satisfied before the commercial is granted to the property owners that we have back there. As far as the buffer zone, that there is, I think, a concern for later on. Suggestion of a pond being put back there would really sound good, as far as I'm concerned. So that's all I have.
You gonna stalk it?
Canada geese just like Jerry Iveybuck.
Chairman, if I may, Kira, would you address or just have some questions for you to, since you speak, I'm not saying you're speaking for them, but somehow you've been elected. There you go, push you there. Going back to Commissioner Kennedy's thinking and just trying to give them some sort of direction, because I think that's going to be the win-win of some sort of direction is, I'm agreeing, too, I don't think we just give them C3 and say, okay, tell me what you're thinking later. I don't really like that. I think that that's probably a deal where if we're in kind of the same thought process here of saying, okay, now go hire your architects and go hire your surveyors and come back and say, now that they've heard you speak, is there a win-win situation? Which means if I lived on Wayne, I may be looking there going, I was going to have a house back there, looking straight in my backyard. Now I may have a buffer zone with some trees. I may have some trash cans to deal with at 3:00 in the morning. But my other thing was, I may have had a three-story apartment complex. I don't want to look at that either. Again, nothing against apartment complexes. So again, it may be a win-win for everybody if we could, if this could come together. I mean, I think it needs to be developed. I'm very sensitive to neighbors of saying, okay, this was platted that, and we've sold you a home, and this is what it's platted, and then all of a sudden, it's not that anymore. So I am extremely sensitive to that. But I think it could be a win-win for everybody on Wayne Street. I know that's a very established neighborhood, and obviously, those are some very, very nice homes, and they don't come on the market, so they must love it there. And I understand why. So I think if we can work with a developer, work with the people on Wayne Street, and that's what I'm trying to come up with, is if you can give either staff at a later date some recommendation, then they could give to them, I think that's how it's going to be, have to be, is a meeting of the minds to come together on that. Wouldn't you agree, Ken? Or, I mean, is that where you were headed with that?
I think so. I think there's a potential there, but I'm just real concerned that we don't get C3 automatically endorsed here and then deal with all the problems after the fact. And I might say that, and this is not a question, but I just might say that we've used planned development a number of times at this table, and then we could look at some concept that made some sense and make that determination. Just jumping straight to C3 just kind of worries me. I'm not going to, I'm just going to be honest, I'm not going to be in favor of it.
Was there a question to me about the buffer?
I just wanted to come up front, just see you again.
I think us on Wayne Street, I can't hardly speak for everyone, because this has just been proposed, but a larger buffer between us and our back fence, commercial C3 and our back fences is a nice solution, a nice idea as to how far and what, obviously, is definitely up for discussion.
And I think that's, my question to you was, are you going to fight this all the way through? Or do you believe that you, on Wayne Street, as a group, can come together and say, we, there could be a give and take that's there, to head it in the direction? Because, again, I am sensitive to the relationship with the neighbors and the homeowners that were there and the conceptual drawing that was done. So I'm asking, do you believe in a consensus for us to even table this, for them to even? I'm trying to give them some direction, too. If you're going to fight it all the way through, it's kind of hopeless if everyone here is thinking that C3 is not a good idea, for this to keep coming in front of us without you guys having some sort of, hey, we'll take a look at something, get us a conceptual drawing, and we'll look at it, and if it works, we'd like to look at it. That was my question. So you don't have to answer it now. I'm just giving you some sort of what the commission may be thinking.
I think we're somewhat open to suggestions, but as to zoning it all C3 and then dealing with these issues later, we are with Ken on that, just from what I've heard from my neighbors, that zoning it and then dealing with this later is not a good idea, in our opinions.
Then I have a question. You have a fairly close neighborhood. You're all talk and communicate. Would it be possible for the developer to meet with the neighbors at some location some evening to talk through some of these things there, rather than us trying to solve it here, which is really difficult, let you all discuss it and then come back with some sort of consensus on the buffer that might be appropriate?
Would you meet at the food court, maybe a little food court at the mall there? Take care of that.
If my neighbors are up for that, I am, too. Discussion is definitely the way to go. I think we can all benefit from that, so.
And then would you all be interested? And then, would you all be interested in that?
Yeah. She says no, he said yes.
I wholeheartedly understand where the neighbors are coming. It's scary to see a zoning application come through and it go from something to commercial, and we understand that wholly. We do hope that there's an understanding that it is changing from having an artillery street put in, additional traffic, possible three-story apartment, all which is doable under the current layout, that we do think we are improving the layout of the PDD in its entirety. We can come up with a conceptual design. I can't tell you that it's the final design, but I can tell you, it's a conceptual design, and we can look at options for, I think the biggest piece here that we're talking about is this buffer. The drainage, I want to separate that from the buffer, because I don't think the two are tied, and our civil engineer really has to come up with a good solution. The fact that it runs with water may not be good at all, that may be a flaw that exists already, that it's filling with water. We may be able to further alleviate those problems, even in a heavy rain situation. So, I'd like to separate those two, but we can come up with and do a conceptual design that shows a buffer, that shows what we can do, that is commercially viable, and also addresses the concern of separating the commercial from the residential, maintaining some kind of landscape or physical buffer.
And I think that's important. I think the buffer is probably the issue as much as anything, and then not making water problems worse.
From staff's perspective, I do believe that Mr. Welsh has hit the nail on the head, and what I'm sensing is that the neighborhood on Wayne is receptive to some increased commercial, but if it's increased commercial that addresses their concerns, if their approach was, we like it residential, we want it residential, and we'll fight any commercial change tooth and nail, that's different from, we would be supportive of commercial as long as it addresses our concerns, I think is, if you're in that mode, then you can work towards establishing parameters that everybody can live with. And we did wanted to share, just for the commission's perspective, the, what, just to give you a scale of things, from here to this point here, is a depth of about 480 feet. And these lots here, their platted depth is 120 feet. So, and I'm not saying 100-foot is magic or the solution, but if you envisioned 100-foot swath here, then basically, you have from this point here to the ring road or to the line of trees that's available for building and parking, that might be excessive, because, you know, you could narrow this 100 feet down to 40 and perhaps address the drainage the same way.
Dean, where is the swale in that area?
There is a swale in there, but the notes that Mr. Stack and I found, it was an interim or temporary solution until development actually occurred in the north. So, the whole idea was that this was not permanent, this was temporary, until development actually occurred in the north, and then an alternative to this could be designed. But obviously, you don't plat residential lots and then put a pond in there on a permanent basis. If it was intended to permanently be for drainage, it would be an extension of this pond. So this was an interim or temporary solution until development actually occurred here.
To answer your question, Carl, it is right underneath those platted lots, that's about where it is.
So it's where the street was planted?
No, it's actual lots.
No, the street would be right off.
The street would be south of the lots, and the lots are where the drainage is currently.
It's actually a lighter colored grass, isn't it?
What's that?
It's a lighter colored grass.
Yeah, you can see it on there.
You can see it.
Exactly. And I want to do, I do want to clarify, the 100-foot is the bottom width of that swale.
It's even wider.
It's two foot deep, three-to-one side slopes, it's about 112 feet, and the total easement's 120, which is magically what those lots are platted at. So it's the 120, I don't want to get the 100-foot or the...
Sure, I understand.
That all can get worked out later, but 120 is, looks like, is what it is right now.
But just so everybody's operating in the same perspective, the width here from here to here is 480 feet.
Correct.
Dean, you stated that nobody has ever, in the time you've known about this, paid any attention to that or had any questions about developing that area? Is that based on, what reasoning do you think that is? Because of the price of the property, or because it's part of the mall's land? Or is, what do you feel is the reason why that's not...
Well, I can't say that it was aggressively marketed for residential use, or that Warmack Properties, the original mall developer, was into that, but we've had people come into town that were looking for properties for residential development, particularly multifamily, and I think one of the bad aspects of this, from a planning standpoint, is putting a lot of apartment units here and then running the traffic back up through here is probably not a real good planning attribute to the current plan. So, if you started adding up the positives and negatives, taking away the traffic connections here is, and making that option go away and circulating off of Ninth Street is a positive for the neighborhood to the north. But I'm simply saying that nobody, you know, you'd have to build these, so there'd certainly be some expense involved in developing this residentially, and nobody expressed interest in taking that on.
You'd have to move a lot of dirt. I mean, that's the bottom line. It would not be very feasible to try to put lots where that big swale is, you have to move the dirt from one place and pile it there. It would be very tough.
As soon as I may be moving this forward one step, it seems like the developer has some interest in looking at some kind of, at least a little more preliminary design that we can get a handle on what that might look like as far as buffer. It seems like the residences might have some interest in at least considering a buffer and giving that some thought, width and style and so forth. And then, I'd like to shift gears a bit to the south part of this that we haven't talked about, and I have no concern whatsoever turning the south to C3. It'd be better than the wheat that grows up in bind wheat each summer that's presently there, or whatever that is. So, that area, I don't have any problem with that being C3 on the south side, so I think we can move this forward a little bit.
Goodness, lover, from this line of Chamber of Commerce, and given what Ken Kennedy said, there's no point in me talking any further. It's exactly what I was gonna mention, was just the south end of the property, and I would encourage you to give them the ability to develop that property and... Certainly give them that tool to use as they continue to work through the issues on the north.
Without a doubt.
Thank you.
And again, just to clarify, as each and every one of these outlots develops that are currently blank slates, the plans, the final plans for those come forward to the Planning Commission for review. It's just that this area up here is so large, and there are so many aspects of that, these do not back up to residential or have buffer concerns or anything. So, these would be reviewed by you on a lot-by-lot basis, so putting these at C3 would make them equivalent to these out here, and we don't have great concerns about that.
Yes, sir.
My name is Jim Usher. I live at 200 East Wayne. You guys keep backing us up, property owners. I bought my lot 30 years ago, in 1980. It was one of the last lots over there. A friend of mine owned that ground. And I thought I was doing everything right. It was the school district that I wanted to live in, and it was a nice neighborhood. This lot was for sale, and I came to the city to see what was going to be in that field. All the streets were named, all the lots were sized. A year later, I bought it in 1980. A year later, I hired a person to build me a home, and two months later, it came out in the paper that there was going to be a mall in my backyard. We couldn't do anything about it. We complained, like we're doing today. Didn't do any good. We did get a buffer. We did get, Warmack did supply some trees. He wouldn't plant them, but he supplied them. My neighbor, Glenn Headley, and his son planted those trees 30 years ago, or 25 years ago. Now, they put the buffer in, and then there was going to be a row of houses, and then some apartments. Well, now, they're wanting to take that away from us. So where is it going to end? Are they gonna buy our houses next?
Yeah, I'm glad you spoke, you can stay there, because I'd like to address that. And I think that's why I was asking, Kira, was, I'm very sensitive, if I'm hearing that from the neighbors, then that's the story that I want to hear from, because if I was living there, I would want somebody to have the same concern that I'm having for you. But I also will turn around and say, be careful what you ask for. Because if I lived there, and it all seemed great, and I really started to think about it, would I rather have a nice, quiet buffer with nobody in my backyard, or would I have a guy build a house and him playing his music and barbecuing of something I've enjoyed of some quietness for 30 years? Because now that people know this is available, I believe the reason nobody's developed on this is because they didn't know what it was. People will move dirt. People can buy this, and homes will be built, and apartment complexes will be built on that now that people know it's available. All I'm saying is, be careful what you ask for. Because if I were you, and I'm not you, but if I lived there on Wayne Street, I'd rather have a nice buffer with some trees, worked out with somebody who's willing to put some money into this, than to have somebody blasting a stereo and 100 additional cars, moving up and down Highland and Wayne and coming out on there. I just, I don't know that that's what you're gonna want.
Well, I don't either, but have you ever driven behind the mall? When Sutherland was out there, and all of the pallets, all the trash containers, all the potholes in the, is that what we're going to look at?
My name is Lisa McDowell. I reside at 6778 East Schilling Road. I'm the general manager of the mall. And I've been there since 2005, through Warmack and Company, through IPFA, and also through receiverships and bankruptcies, and Garrison Ownership bought us in December of 2000, or actually, 2010. And as you all can agree and contest, they've done some amazing things to that property. The property ability inside, and they really have plans architecturally to bring that property up to where it needs to be, so it doesn't look dated of a 1996 property. As I can understand, because I work, or the individuals in this room, we have conversations with them on a regular basis, whether there's a tree needs to be cut down. I mean, there are a lot of things, I think Mr. Welsh had a good point of, you know, be careful what you wish for. These developers have a plan to develop that land, whether it is residential, whether it is commercial. It's nice to see, working for the property, that we actually see somebody that's taken an interest in this property, as you can all tell. In 20, we will have our 25th anniversary in March, and that, there's not a lot of action been going on, and as many of you and individuals that I see on the street want to know why it's not been developed. Why has this property, why are we not getting this, and why are we not getting this? And as a resident of this community, I know every single day, my phone rings wanting to know what is new coming to this property. And I believe the individuals that purchase this property do not have the plan. I don't, I understand his point, but we are not the mid-state mall. We do have a standard of that property, of keeping it clean. As you can tell, we've put money in trying to renovate the parking lot, and that's an ongoing situation, and again, trying to add cosmetically and aesthetically the property to look decent enough for this line of community. So, I mean, as I do believe there is a happy medium that we all can come together on, I do want you all to take that into consideration as well.
Thank you.
And from our perspective, who owns it now is one issue, but when it changes zoning, that zoning goes with the new owner. So if another owner comes in without the same vision that the current owner sounds like it's got some good possibilities, but this goes on past the current owner, and that's why there's sometimes some concerns on not just who owns it now, but what the zoning is.
Well, I mean, and most of you are aware, the city doesn't let you really do a whole lot, you know, I mean, there are some aesthetic appeal that comes along with every single property owner in here of what you can and cannot do to your property, so.
Thank you. Any questions of the speaker?
I think for this item, the most important message that the applicant could hear from you today is to arrive at a consensus from the commission. Are you willing to entertain the change to commercial zoning designation, provided that they meet with the neighboring owners on Wayne, and then come back with additional detail, establishing a, parameters for a buffer strip, and it doesn't mean it has to be solved, but just basically a roadmap to get to addressing what needs to be done to substitute an alternate drainage plan for this swale. This is, this is not foreign territory for the Planning Commission. We sat in this room years back when the Sam's Club was proposed at the south end of Highland and Gale there, and all those owners were told that that would always be a wheat field, that it was undevelopable, and of course, it's not always gonna be a wheat field, and we were able to come up with a buffer strip and design between Sam's Club and the properties to the north on Gale and Highland, and to work through that. But the developer there did have a meeting with the property owners on Gale and discussed things that they wanted to see incorporated into a buffer, and came back to the Planning Commission and said, we will take those things into account in our design. It is, on the one hand, it's premature to expect them to deliver a design for how Track 12 would be developed, but on the other hand, this is a planned development district that has about a three-page ordinance that goes with it, that has a great deal of detail in it, and we're proposing to amend that, and it would be a step in the wrong direction to take the level of detail that we've gotten to today and just say, well, it's a blank check. You can't do a planned development district with a blank check. But I think it would be important to get some consensus from the commission to the applicant that says, we would favorably entertain commercial zoning if you addressed buffers and drainage and items that are concerned to the neighbors on Wayne. If they heard that, then that we'd know that we were moving in a direction that we could reach a solution to. If that's not the case, then do an additional work and research towards trying to find the win-win situation would probably not be beneficial to anybody. But if there was a consensus among the commission that you were favorably disposed towards making the area north of Dillard's commercial, provided that buffers and drainage were addressed, and perhaps there was a meeting with the owners on Wayne to discuss those things, then this could come back and we could firm it up for you in terms of establishing parameters for what could occur on Track 12.
Gentlemen, we could take a straw poll here, or you could individually offer your opinions that might give them some additional clarification.
The other thing would be, and we have heard, but to give an indication of how everybody feels about the tracks on Magnolia and lifting the office restriction there.
I, for one, have no problem with any of the C3, because I think... I, for one, have no problem with any of the C3 because I think both parties, both the, the homeowners and the mall ownership are motivated to work things out. So, I think there's a plan to come up that'll satisfy us entirely doable. That's my opinion.
Well, when we, I received the packet and started looking through there, I was surprised that there was no preliminary plan of, of any kind. And the best part of this does seem to be in the next phase, the abandoning of the Fourth Street and the Highland accesses. So, I think from that standpoint, you're in a, you're on the, in the right direction. I would still like to see something really innovative and, and I wouldn't mind seeing something that was a mixed use. I've seen some in Colorado, I've seen one in Missouri where it's a ground floor, commercial or office and loft housing in brand-new shopping center-like development. And so, you have the mixed use of residential and commercial together, but again, with appropriate access back out through the commercial zone rather than through the, the present 100% single-family zone to the north. So, I really would like to see some kind of preliminary plan before we went with C3, but I'm definitely not opposed to the concept.
I, I have no problem with C3 on the south part. Understand, I think that should happen and could happen and is logical to happen. And I certainly want to see something on the north part that is at least an attempt to work with the property owners in the neighborhood to develop something that's appealing to both of you as much as possible. It just makes it a win-win for everybody and makes our job a whole lot easier here. So, that would give you an opportunity to do that and then come back with that, at least something preliminary. I know you can't determine what businesses will be there, but some way to buffer that and, and that's important to me.
I agree with Ken on the south side. I have no problems with that. I may take a harsher approach that may not be favorable to the, to the mall, but I, I believe that if it comes back to the commission, my, even with the plan that's there, if one, I count 14 homes along Wayne there, counting the new one by the track, but if one of the homeowners disagrees with the plan of the buffer zone, I cannot support it. I just, I strongly believe that if I purchased property and I looked at a plan that was there, just because the majority of my neighbors who didn't care or didn't show up or thought it was okay, I still don't believe it's okay for me to have to change my lifestyle and what I really wanted to do based on, the mall knew, they, the new buyers, the plat's been in place since whenever it is. I mean, they knew what was there. Everybody knew what was there was in, trying to get it changed. So, that'll be my view and it's probably a harsh one, but that's the way I feel about the replat.
Unfortunately, I agree more with Todd because I deal with this on a daily basis such as Todd does. We, we see people that have, have always believed that they, when they purchased a property, they've been told that something behind them was never going to happen. And maybe they were, were told it was going to happen and they, and 10 years later, they, if something happens they didn't like and, and they, they maybe fudge the story a little bit, which I've seen that happen too. But I believe, I believe that if the, the plan was made, the mall was put there, it's very difficult unless you can come up with a, with a, with a consensus with the, with the people behind. I don't, don't think that we can change to a C3 just, you know, we, I think there's, there's a, there's a benefit to having residential there. I, I like having more residential lots. I didn't even know it was there and I'm in, I'm in real estate. So, I, I feel foolish there, but, but I, I believe that that area could be utilized for residential as easy as C3. And, and unless the, the people on Highland agree to, to change that over to a C3 and then come up with a good plan, that we, I would be probably against moving it to a C3. But I, I think I'd have to see, see some plans first from the, from the developer.
I'm not totally opposed to the C3, but I like some of the comments made by Todd and the previous commissioner.
Did you have a remark, sir?
Yes, dear. I don't mind the C3, but don't flood me out putting C3 in at all.
Oh, we'll take, they'll take care of that. Is that enough of a consensus for you, Dean?
Yeah, I think our, our recommendation would be to postpone a, a formal recommendation that would go on to the, basically continue the public hearing until we can get a conceptual plan that, that indicates what for, even if it's a four-sided box that's partially located on the property that says, "This is the part we wish to devote to parking and building and this is the part we wish to devote as a buffer." Have to understand that plan, what was proposed in 1980 and 81 and then in 86 continually got amended, but at every step of the way, the Planning Commission would says, "This is our concept." Concepts change, but it, at least that gives you something on a preliminary basis that you can compare the final product to. And again, this is, it's designed to be a two-stage process and this is basically, we're at the preliminary plan stage and at some point in the future, when there's an actual user and something to develop there, it will come back in the form of a final plan, just as the school district's plans for the alternate school and, and future development there would, would come back. But you have to start with something, even if it's a, a single box and, and some parking sketched out. That would give the property owners on Wayne and you as commissioners a chance to see what that concept is. So, our recommendation would be alternative three to continue the public hearing on the requested zoning change until the applicant submits a, a conceptual plan for that Track 12 north of Dillard's.
Is there a motion to that?
Consensus to come to that. Now, we're going to do a motion for it.
There is consensus.
Do we just...
To let them know that you are, you are willing to consider C3.
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We will continue the matter. Thank you very much, everyone, for your, for your comments. Next item is an administrative item, application P90-1B, Cow Valley Engineering requesting an approval of a replat of the Central Mall.
John, is it the aerial map? Is it the last PDF that I gave you? You put that up there? This is more for the benefit of Mr. Loader with Cow Valley and also for the mall owners and, and this is the most important aspect of the replat. So, I don't know if there's any, probably can't magnify this at all, John, but I just, the importance of the replat is, is two things. The replat establishes obviously perimeter boundaries and, and lot lines. And so, the replat would take all these individual lots here and, and wipe them out. This street right of way would come out, Fourth Street right of way would come out. That would all be incorporated into one lot. But the other aspect of this is important is the way the city of Salina determines what utilities are public and what are private is through the dedication of easements on a plat. And so, we have reviewed this with our utilities department and wanted to clarify that in order to go through the exercise of, of replating this, that these lines out here are considered public lines and they have fire hydrants on them and these would be publicly city-owned and maintained lines. From this point here over to here is a city sewer. From this point here, going up and serving these outlets is a sewer that is owned and maintained by Central Mall. So, that is their sewer, not the city's, but from this point over, it is the city's. We consider this to be part of the city network and would own and maintain these, but they have to be placed in easements. So, one of the things that we did and identified in our review of the proposed replat is that we need to make sure that on the replat drawing, that this line, that an easement is maintained for that, an easement all the way around here for this line. Our records don't show this line as being public, but we are willing to take that on since it does have fire hydrants on it and we believe it to be built to our standards. So, the plat would contain easements for that. That is just a technical item to work through with Mr. Loader, the, the surveyor on the replat, but it is, it's very important that if you're going through the plating process, as Mr. Kennedy learned on the, on the Central High plat, one of the, the most important aspects of a plat is what is shown as easement and what is not shown as easement. And then what also becomes important in our discussions here, whatever we end up with here in terms of a, a buffer or swale or, or drainage through here, the width that's roughly 112 feet today or 120 is temporary, but there would be an easement for this pond and then an easement for any other drainage areas that, that might be designated. So, the, the short answer is until these two are married together where you're comfortable with a preliminary development plan for Track 12 and, and the rest of the site, then we would recommend postponing action on the replat so that it stays married to the zoning action. And so, what we would do is, is work with Mr. Loader from this point. We furnished him with this drawing, but we would work to make sure that the plat addresses this. So, it's, it is the one record drawing that tells everybody is, is you know the mall has changed ownership, it changed hands and you have turnover with city personnel. So, it is the easement designation for those utility lines that determines what's public and what's private. And we would want to make sure that the, the final replat that you consider clearly identifies what is public and what is private on the mall property. So, given that you've postponed or continued the public hearing on the zoning, our recommendation would be to not take action on the replat, but to keep those items joined together and we will work to get those utility easements identified on the plat.
Questions or comments of Dean on this issue from the commission? The applicant care to address this? Public?
Need a motion, I'll make a motion, postpone.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
It will be postponed. Are there other matters?
We do not have any matters to bring forward with you today. The item that we had originally was requesting a January 3 hearing and now requested that that be moved to January 17th. So, the January 3 meeting is canceled and your next meeting will be on the 17th of January.
Thank you very much. Thank you, staff.
Can we just show up and sit for two hours?
That boy, Doc?
We will make Barack Obama...